Okay, good evening, everybody. Today is July sixteenth, Mills County Board Adjustment Meeting. I get a roll call, please.
Pat Collins.
Here.
Ted Gopka.
Here.
Cory Lake.
Here.
Jennifer Warren. Other gentleman, here.
Okay, please note that Jennifer Warren's absent. Can I get a review, action approval of the current meeting agenda? Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second, my pass, thank you. And I also get a review, action approval of the meeting minutes. June, I believe.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pat.
Motion.
Second by Ted, okay, all right. Okay, tonight's discussion of formal action will be on a permit number twenty-four dash one eight eight for proposed commercial use of a campground to operate as glamping operation at the address located at one nine six seven zero Eastman Road, Pacific Junction, in the Oak Township, Les Hills Conservation Development Zone. If applicants ready, we're ready for your application or your presentation, I'm sorry.
Yes, hi, my name is Gabrielle Tigeter, this is my husband Greg. Um, the property that we have has actually been in his family for a little over a hundred years. And we have other family members that own a lot of the property around it as well. Um, how much is the property total? I forgot how many acres.
This is thirty-two acres. This is twenty-four. Tracy in Kansas, about sixty.
Okay, so it's kind of all in that area. Um, along Eastman Road. And um, his sister is the only one who has actually developed any of it, she lives on her property with her family.
She's the Bleachic family.
So, um.
And go ahead, if you will, just go ahead and go to us, that way.
Oh, sure.
That's, that's great.
No problem. Um, so um, our idea was that although we don't live in uh Mills County, we do live in Omaha, we both work there right now. Eventually, we would, when we retire, we do plan to move on to the property. But in the meantime, um, we were thinking about ways that we could develop it without it harming the property itself, because we're very keen on keeping it as much natural as we can. Um, I'm actually a geologist and a geographer, I teach geology and geography and sustainability at UNO. And so, um, the idea we had had was to open this glamping campground, which would be very low impact. And it would also be sustainable. So, um, we're not planning on bringing in electricity or digging wells, we're planning on using solar power. For each tent will have its own solar power. Um, the uh
Solar water fumigated.
The water, um, but we will not have normal running water. It is a campground, it's not like it's, you know, a hotel. But, uh, we do plan to have a bathroom with sinks and toilets, the toilets will be composting toilets. Um, but we will have running water in the sinks. And the water would come from hydro panels, which are solar operated as well. Um, and we have looked into those, um, they're currently used a lot for mainly for drinking water purposes, so um, we have also looked into rainwater capture if we do decide to eventually have showers as well, but that's down the road if we do that, it's not currently in the plan. Um, and um, we also plan to um, we have currently trails, they're mostly, you know, deer trails and just trails that the family has made over time. Plan on widening those and putting wood chips down on them and then having informational signs about the land, about the soils, about Les soils, about the different kinds of trees they're seeing, about the wildlife and so on. Um, I am a, actually a Nebraska master naturalist, and I'm on the list to become an Iowa master naturalist this fall, hopefully. Um, in addition to everything else, so I really am big on educating people. Um, and also on sustainability, so like I said, it's really important to us not to hurt the land as we're using it. Um, our glamping ground will be, uh, at first at least, uh, just five sites, five tents. Um, so it's low impact, um, it is in an interior valley inside the property, it's not right on the edge or right by somebody else's property line. Um, and those tents will be, you know, fifty feet away from each other too, so they'll all each have their own little privacy. Currently, it is an overgrown valley. Um, we are working with Iowa DNR to um, get rid of the invasive trees that are there right now. Um, and then we are going to be doing a prescribed burn this fall to clear out the rest of the valley. Um, just the five acres of where the campground will be, not the whole thing at this point.
Five over the thirty-two acres?
Yep.
Yeah.
In that valley.
Um, now, the DNR is suggesting we do more of the prescribed burns over the next three years, and they're willing to help us, they're actually partially funding it with us. Um, we have an application in with them and uh, to do cost sharing, to get rid of the uh, invasive trees, as well as to do the prescribed burn. Um, we are also have a a farms assistance application and two, to do some cost sharing to develop it as a wildlife area. Uh, and have it designated that.
So you're working with the NRCS?
Yes.
Okay.
Our LLC has already been approved through Iowa, it's already been registered, um, this is kind of our last step, and then once we get to this, assuming we can get through this, um, our next step would be, uh, getting the business loan for finishing to develop the property itself.
What's the property right now?
It's just woodland, it's all overgrown, there's nothing there.
Nothing there.
Absolutely, not even a rodent, I mean, we have a driveway now that we put in, but other than the driveway going up fifty feet about, it's it.
It's driveway to the top of the hill, and then it's completely undeveloped, typical Les Hills.
Mostly volunteer trees then?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of them.
This was cleared twenty years ago. And
The valley was.
Yeah, the valley we're talking about, so.
The rest of it is all woodland.
Yeah, everything outside of that area that's cleared, this five acres, is some of the older trees, but a lot of the stuff in that valley is volunteers.
Um, and it appears that you're about maybe a quarter mile off of one hundred ninety-fifth street.
Right.
Yeah, so you're, you know the gravel road to Eastman? Yeah, so they're a quarter mile off of it roughly, from one hundred ninety-fifth street, which is the pavement that goes along the bluff.
Right.
Back to the east.
Those units, how far would those be from Eastman?
About a hundred and fifty to two hundred yards.
So you can see him from Eastman?
You can't, not on this road.
Because of the top, the power.
Yeah, it goes up, and then there's trees, and then there are a hundred yards back from the hat.
Can't see anything.
You can't see anything from the road, and that's the appeal for it, is for these tents to not see the road, to basically escape into nature and and be isolated from everything.
Okay, thank you.
You said thirty-two acres? Total, yeah. The, the main area, we have, he has two different properties that is in his name.
Okay.
Um, the main one is seventeen.
It's nineteen point seven five acres.
Yeah.
That are directly off Eastman, and then there's an adjacent, it's actually twenty-four acres that I share with my sister, and if we decide to develop more, we'll split that and then we'll adjoin, so.
That's north of the.
Yeah.
Yes. And it's what basically connects us to the Bleachic property, uh, on the backside.
Just through us, because this wasn't thirty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, there's, there's a lot of different acreages there for the family.
Okay.
And we're absolutely willing to answer any questions we can.
We'll, we'll probably come back with you on that, so if you guys are finished with your presentation.
Yes.
Okay, then we're gonna go into the next piece of public comment. There's anybody that has public comment, please stand, address us, please, and uh, say your name.
Concerns. Hello, Dominic Clemm, I'm a property owner in the area, I live off of Edson Road, have about forty-seven acres. Not too far from you guys, it sounds like a, a nice plan to use of the land, I do have concerns, typical landowner concerns, et cetera.
Um, go ahead and address that, we'll, we'll bring it back to them.
Currently, it's, it's a residential area, so anytime a commercial operation goes into residence, residential area, people are concerned with noise, right, so people live there while people are vacationing there. So what, what are your thoughts, what? I guess if that can be addressed as a question on the fire danger, it is Les Hills, um, a lot of us have a lot of land, a lot of acres, and you know, that's, I think it's a real concern, it's difficult to get equipment in there to put out fires, people are camping, not opposed to it, just needs to be addressed. Um, the number of units was stated as five, is that intended to grow would be another concern? Um, and then also probably the last one is just the boundaries. So people go hiking, it sounds like a wonderful place, woods are wonderful. Um, I would not want, as a landowner, somebody who enjoys my privacy of my land, my wife riding the woods alone, we don't want to be surprised, we target shoot, deer hunt, we bow hunt, we fill trees, uh, we would hope that the people that are camping would know exactly what the boundaries are, and they would understand that they should not leave those boundaries to private property. And then I guess one last question, two, two questions. What seasons of operation is a year round? And then what are the types of structures, are they tents, would they ever become, you know, what, somebody may consider a mobile home or a prefab house? So, hi, Don.
Is there any additional public comment?
Um, I'm Bob Danker, I live next to the property, I know Greg well. Um, I guess, one of the questions I have, and I have a few here, um, how does this affect by going commercial property? How is that gonna affect my taxes, if at all? Um, right now, Eastman Road is horrible as far as dust control, I spend about seven hundred dollars a year in front of my place alone. We'll bring more people in, which is, I mean, I've lived there twenty-two years, it's always been growing. And the county's gotten less and less and less, when I started the building there twenty-two years ago, the county actually put down the first layer of dust control. They quit doing that, so we've picked it up. But now, is the county gonna put in anything special because it's a commercial area to help control the dust?
This isn't being rezoned.
Yeah.
Pardon? It's not being rezoned.
It can't.
This isn't rezoning the piece of property.
It won't be a commercial property.
Conservation district, it'd be a pretty big act to change that.
Okay.
Which, yeah.
Um, what about, uh, like pork potties, how do we control the human waste? And trash? Um, this gentleman mentioned fire control, um, how many campsites are we talking about? Um, you know, is it gonna be fifteen or fifty or, you know? Um, I guess I have some of the same concerns, at two o'clock in the morning, I don't want someone showing up at my place, asking me to use the bathroom, because they don't wanna go potty out where the bugs are. Because they're probably gonna get a real rude awakening to a morning. They'll probably go to the bathroom right there in front of my door. So, um, I guess that's all I have. I think some of the stuff she covered very well.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Leave anybody else, there was one letter.
Yeah.
I'll read it. Yeah. I'm writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed glamping outdoor entertainment proposed for lot four of Otter Subdivision twenty seventy-three forty-three in Mills County, Iowa. Also named Firefly Outpost. While I understand the location would be a desirable spot to have lodging and entertainment, I believe that this project would have a detrimental impact on our community. First and foremost, the proposed development is simply too large for our area, but the plan's is to start small with three to five glampers, the potential of reaching up to twenty is still a possibility. Increased traffic alone would put a strain on Eastman Road, which is already poorly maintained due to the overwhelming traffic on the Rock Road. The glamping, the glamp ground will also cause noise pollution, littering, damage to natural habitats, and put wildlife at risk. Furthermore, this business plan is simply not in keeping with the character of our neighborhood, neighborhood, this is an acreage residential area and should not be used for commercial usage. This business would bring in many patrons that would otherwise not have known about these private lots. Drawing attention to these hidden lots could lead to increased crime rates and other negative social effects, many homeowners, including ourselves, bought our land and built our homes with the hopes of no noise pollution, solitude and safety. Finally, I am deeply concerned about the impact this development would have on property values in the surrounding area. The influx of traffic and noise could result in decline in property values, making it difficult for current residents to sell their homes and move elsewhere. If you decide to grant this application as a property owner, as a property owner directly adjacent, and the most affected to this proposed commercially business, we would expect no less than the board to require a professional survey. Be certified, by a certified surveyor of the adjoining property line. We would also expect the board to require a setback of a minimum of fifty feet to prevent glamping sites from accidentally being set up too close to our property. The forest is very dense, so the survey should install. We would also ask the board to implement noise regulations as far as volumes and noise curfews, while I recognize the desire to start a business such as this, I believe this that this project is simply not the right fit for our neighborhood, I strongly urge you to reconsider this proposed business development, thank you for your consideration in this matter, Chuck and Mary. They're not here, correct? Correct, okay. Okay, that was a lot longer than I thought I wouldn't have read it. Yes, yes, what?
I'm Renee Coffee, and I don't like to talk in front of people, so I might sound nervous. I guess as absent property owners, I do have concerns, will there be someone to oversee things? I called Brian Johnson, he's the Oak Township, ship, um, fire chief. I talked to him for quite a while about this, and he said that it's one of, he said, I could quote him, one of their greatest fears is a fire in the Les Hills. He said they don't have the resources, and if they need water to um, resupply, they go to Ohana, or possibly they'd have to get um, permission from Monkey to um, refill their tanks. It's hard, the train is hard to get up, and they don't have a lot of manpower, he said, anything in the Les Hills, he told me, all the units they would call in. And to me, it is a fear, because with all those trees, we own property across the road, it's not as much as they have, but our house is farther down the road, and I do have a concern if somebody would be negligent and a fire began, it can spread in years of drought pretty quickly, and that is a fear that I have. Um, and so I, I guess that to me, being an absent property owner is a big concern that I have, and so, and I do urge the board to table this and to take all these things into consideration before making a decision, so, thank you.
Thanks, Renee. We're gonna move into staff report now.
Cory?
Yes, yes, Richard.
Hello, the VDoral, ma'am, Richard Crouch, county supervisor, I sit on this board. Uh, my major concerns is, is the rescue, and especially the fire, I've talked to some of the fire departments. And to be quite honest, they would see it said, it would be forty-five minutes to an hour before they could get there because of the, if they had to rely on Miniola coming out the hills and stuff and getting Cur over to the bottom. Uh, they said forty-five minutes would be the closest we could make it, well, the winds we have around here and stuff in the fall or the spring of the year when things are dry. And rescue is the same way, uh, being a specific junction is no longer reliable, they'll probably never have another uh, fire rescue down there, so that comes to Glenwood, Glenwood's out, it goes to Miniola, Miniola's called out or something, then it goes through over to Malvern for the next fire, for the next rescue unit, so that's just some things, and the road, like you say, the county will not put down any dust control for a private property and stuff unless we're using it for a detour, then we put down dust control. Uh, and, you know, I, I don't know, we haven't gotten far enough into this, but looking at getting rescue units and things in there, you're gonna have to build this to an engineer speculation. So, uh, and water, water is a big issue. I'm sorry, folks, there's none out there in a pond anymore, so. That's my comment.
Sure. Okay, now we're gonna move into staff report, please.
Boy, give you the staff report they have there in front of you, but hearing the concerns of, you know, some of the people throughout this meeting, I, I did add to that piece of it, now this is in the Les Hills Conservation Development Area. Uh, campground of this nature is a listed conditional use in those areas. Um, and so that goes along with what I'm about to say for the staff recommendation on there. It would be to approve the application based on the following conditions, and I have nine of them look written out here. So, on the first condition, which I do feel is important, conditional uses are meant to be there for people who do live on the land, so the number one condition would be that the property owner first construct a home and live on site. I feel like that, like that's important to make sure that you have some skin in the game and be able to control the site as it, as it grows and goes on. Uh, number two is that the sites would be limited to three to five camping units. Number three is parking will be established with an all-weather, with an all-weather surface and meet the accessibility requirements of the International Fire Code. And that's important for the fire vehicles to be able to have access to the site, and that comes with turnaround specifications in it as well. The property owner, uh, shall meet and give a tour of the site to the fire department before the site opens each year after providing information, uh, providing that information to the building and zoning department. Number five would be the property owners will, will work with Mills County Environmental Health to establish sanitation facilities for the sites. Um, chapter sixty-nine gets pretty specific in there, when you're gonna have a site like this and the availability of the water for it, number six would be the established quiet hours for the site from ten to ten PM to eight AM. Number seven is special events such as parties, weddings, stargazing, et cetera, would require an additional content, conditionally use permit. Number eight is that the property owner will supply dust control from one hundred ninety-fifth street to the entrance of the property. And number nine, the site will be fenced to ensure that the customers stay within the site. This was based on the following findings of fact, that the subject property is located in the LH Les Hills Development District. Zoning ordinance adopted in conjunction with the land use plan stipulates that a campground is a permitted conditional use in the district. Number two is that the safety of the campground is in the best interest of the public and the property owners, structures and roads shall be permitted by Mills County and be constructed to code requirements. Number three is that firing EMS service to the rural environment is challenging in a residential situation and more so in a commercial use environment. Volunteer fire and EMS must be engaged to ensure safety. Number four is that health and sanitation is important for a site like this, and therefore sanitation facilities will be permitted and inspected by the Mills County Environmental Health.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Appreciate that, I think a lot of those concerns were, were so, one thing we didn't talk about as the application, what is the idea of having campfires and those types of processes?
Yes, I probably should have brought that before, uh, as it is, what we're planning to do is the area that the tents will be on, and they are tents, they are not permanent structures, they're not like houses or sheds. Um, they will be, there's gravel going to be around those tents, there will be no permitted fires, um, the only fires will be in um, firing. Yes, it, well, in firings, but they are propane fires, they're actual
Control, yeah, within the.
There's not gonna be any collecting of firewood, there's uh, nothing like that, so no open fires are allowed, and no candles, no you know, tiki torches, nothing like that, because we are also concerned about that. Right now, it's actually a bigger fire danger, because nobody's doing anything with the property and it's all overgrown, which is why we had the DNR come out um, to look at that. So that is one thing, is that we do not want fires, and that's why we're doing the prescribed burns, because we wanna make it safer than it is now. Um, so hopefully that alleviates some of the, the ideas that we have planned of zero than flame. Um, just in those firings that are gonna be all around the stone, with stone all around them, so, nothing like that. Um, so that was, that is, hopefully.
I would say that was, is one of the biggest items, also getting the EMS equipment back there, uh, is there road, the construction, I think what Richard was saying was to be able to drive fire trucks and or ambulances or anything of that sort into these areas, these roads have to, can't be a typical road that goes through the middle of the hills that a horse rides on.
Right, no, 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 yeah, and right now that we have one driveway that goes up and it's a little bit steep, and it comes up to just to the top of that little hill, um, we are actually planning on making a secondary road that's, it'll be a loop. So it shouldn't be a problem, there won't have to be a turnaround if there was a need um, for a big vehicle like a fire truck to come up for some reason. Um, because we don't want to have a really steep hill for anybody to have to drive up anyway. Um, so we plan to have a, a more gradual switchback that will go around there.
And then I think the boundaries, which we've had one similar to this in the past, I think some of the concerns, it wasn't quite like this, but similar, they lived on site, which is gonna be the next big topic here, but the boundaries of this, um, fencing and improvement.
We are already planning on getting a survey of the whole property.
It looks, it appears that you have a survey of the property here.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, but of having, yeah, we have the property surveyed already. Um, but we are planning ourselves on going through and um, following, because, and some of the survey lines, there is actually already barbed wire fence up. On some there is not, because it's just been decades since it was put up. Um, and so in, but along all those places, we are planning on putting up um, fencing, um, just split rail, simple fencing, going all the way around.
Adjacent, or the perpendicular line coming up from Eastman, and then on the backside of the campground.
All the way to his sister's property.
Is that line, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, does that need, does that, since that fence, does that need to be inside the property line?
Yes.
By next fifty feet, ten feet, what is the rule on that?
No, I mean, you can start it on your property.
You can do it on the property line, okay.
Yeah, so that's what we're planning on doing, because we don't want, we don't want our campers to stray into private property, we don't want them to go off the trails, in fact.
Okay, okay.
Um.
I included it as one of the conditions, because you don't want it to become down, if it were to play out as Iowa fence law, they could potentially go to the middle of the fence line, call the township trustees, you know, go to the middle of their fence line.
That's why I was wanting to move it, that's why I'm just thinking.
Yeah, so then that way, they're not inflicting any expense on the neighbors just to make sure that they keep the people in.
Right, and we don't wanna do that either, um, yeah, we had already planned on having a simple fence put in.
I would, what I would recommend, or what I would like to see is that fence be ten or fifteen feet in from the property lines. Because what we're saying, what is that the fence rule in Iowa on the line is the right-hand rule.
Right.
Um, which would really make neighbors upset, so, um, okay.
So that was another, one of the other things that we had already kind of addressed in our heads is something we will address before we open the campground.
And seasons?
We are not planning on having it, you know, in December, January, February. The glamping at that point, so in theory, it would open at some point in March, close sometime in November, it would just depend on the weather, when we would open and close, to be honest.
Okay, now I guess the probably the one that really makes a difference and board can speak up any time, it was, is without a caretaker that's permanently on.
We do plan to have a caretaker cottage, so to speak, it's, you know, gonna be a tiny home, basically. Um, but it's, and it's not gonna be, it's still gonna have its own, you know, the hydro panel and the, the solar panel, so.
Yeah, we were planning on building a sustainable structure with the tiny home, um, at no point would there be anybody out there where the tiny home was not occupied.
We will, it would always be one of us, or one of our.
There will be constant supervision for both noise, fire, and occupancy regulate, regulations for ourselves.
Because we're trying to sustain the property. We're not trying to let people come out there and throw parties. There's gonna be a limited occupancy for each group that occupies a tent.
Each tent has.
Not gonna be over six people, so we're never gonna get fifty people out there for a party.
No.
This is to get away from people. It's not to bring more people in.
Two of the tents are two-person tents, two of the tents are up to four people, and one tent is up to six people. So even if they're all occupied, that's not that many people.
Eighteen people. And they will be supervised by someone on site.
Somebody on site who sleeps over there.
For the, our primary reason for that was the fire. We don't want anybody, even if they see wood, to go get wood and start a fire. They're gonna be told you have this grill that's propane, that's on the, the rock. You can use it. You can sit around this fire ring that has propane, and that's where you can have fire. Nowhere else are you allowed to have fire, not gonna burn anything else, and, uh, any violation of noise, fire, trash is gonna be reason for expulsion.
And we already have built into our plan to have quiet hours from ten to nine, actually, which you would recommend at ten to eight. So we had already planned ten to nine for quiet hours.
But I would move to ten to nine?
I'm having. I'm having, uh, trouble supporting it if there's property owners not on site. Well, they. Forty-five minutes from E M T. You know.
We do have his sister that is right on the adjacent property who's also helping us out with it too. So they, they walk the property daily. Um, she and her husband do. So it's not that nobody is ever out there. That's why we have trails out there right now.
We were gonna have people on site at all times, so.
So you're saying if there's, if there's people in the campground, even if it's only one tent being on.
If there's one tent, there's gonna be a supervisor of people. At no point will there be any people out there without somebody there.
There's gonna be, most people wanna be on a campfire when they camp.
That's why they'll, they'll have the.
You've got propane, are people gonna want that and do that?
We've actually done.
This isn't camp, camping, traditional camping, this is lamping and people, a lot of people who do lamping don't even know.
These aren't gonna be even in-ground tents. They're gonna be on platforms. They're gonna be set up. There's gonna be extra.
So is it, are they gonna be hiking then? What are they gonna be doing?
There's gonna be hiking trails. We're going to reach out to the winery that's local, the various businesses that are local. We're not doing this independent of everybody. We're gonna try to collaborate with other businesses and bring more business in. What we're using as a model is something like Kimberly Creek. They've already got this model built, except they're using tiny homes. We're using some of the same models for fire restriction. They're using the, uh, fire rings and grills. There's no open fire there.
So then would you be an L L C or?
It is an.
It is an L L C. It's already written.
So then would you be required to have adequate insurance, say you start your neighbor's property on fire?
Absolutely, we have to have insurance. And we will, we have not gotten that yet, because we haven't obviously gotten the permission yet.
I think if accepted, that should be another condition, but I'm, I'm, I'm not on board with it, I'm sorry.
Because current, currently, um, like I said, the, uh, the D N R was saying that currently it is a fire hazard, just because it's completely overgrown. Nothing's been done to it for over twenty years, other than uncontrolled fires from other people like trash.
I mean.
And I've been out there several times putting fires out myself when adjacent properties have caught fire. So I've been out there, I understand the risks. I've been, been out there with the volunteer fire department. I've helped take implements out of their hands when they were struggling to get up hills during the summers and put those fires out myself. And it's not just on our property. I've gone to the adjacent properties and put fires out. That's happened ten and fifteen years ago.
Is your adjacent property all undeveloped or is any of it real crop?
No, no.
Nowhere, so.
This is all in the hills. This is all where, I mean, it's. Yeah.
It is all with. A mix of grass, native grass, not probably brom and.
It's all woodland, actually, where we are.
It's all woodland.
The dead trees are just laying there too.
Yeah. And that's what we're trying, one of the things we're trying to get rid of, which is why we're trying to partner with them to clear out the, the dead stuff. And having this property out there will help us to, you know, maintain it. Because right now, it's just sitting there. Having people out there, having this, um, you know, having a reason to maintain it, kind of, rather than just letting it sit there and do nothing.
Yeah, I don't know though.
Can you address the trash issue? I don't think I've heard how you're dealing with.
Uh, we have, there's gonna be trash, trash sites taken out daily by the site personnel that are gonna be there. There will not be allowed to be any people there without people there. There will be pre, pre-trash before people arrive. There's gonna be turnover, just like any other hospitality place. So before anybody arrives, trash is all gonna be taken out. After everybody's gone, the site personnel are gonna go around. Police for trash, police, um, both the bins and the trails for trash.
Or you said there was something like this in the county?
We did something similar to this on Pease Road, but the difference was that people lived there.
Yeah.
Help me out here, I don't remember.
Uh, it was down by, by Blackburns, where Blackburns live, uh, almost a taper.
The, um, covered wagons. It's the best nest farm.
What happened with that?
They're in business.
They're in business.
There's maybe only two.
Yeah, they have.
Had a couple.
They have two.
Two.
But you said currently five, but you're planning to grow it and expand onto your sister's property?
No, no, that was, what we are, we're saying is we currently want five. Conceivably, in that five acres, we could get up to twenty. Right now, that's not the plan. Right now, the plan is five, because we're not living out there. Um, you know, it's gonna be about ten years, we figure for till retirement, and at that point, we do plan to have a home. If we wanted to expand, I assume we would have to apply to expand, that we wouldn't just be able to just add them on anyway. So I figured that's not even an issue at this point, expansion, because I'll have, we'll have to get permission to expand anyway. And it would just be in that same valley. It wouldn't be expanding out further towards the property lines.
Yeah, there's no other valleys that are suitable on, on this piece of land for this, so it's limited. Um, within the five to seven acres that's on this valley. Everything else either goes down into a gully or goes up a hillside.
So those covered wagons on Pease Road, are they allowed to have a campfire?
I believe so, but one thing they're on Lust Hills, two.
It's not the Lust Hills.
It's on Lust Hills, too. They live on site.
That was just, they are.
Yeah, and so the, 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 the real issue. And I understand that this, these might all be within fifty yards of each other, is they have a nine-one-one address there. So when somebody calls, there was an issue at that Pease Road house, they're immediately there with a nine-one-one address with roads that are already county capable. So the road's already there. I think at one time we actually spoke, because they're part of the road, went across the dam of a pond, and we were making sure that it was wide enough for the, the personnel, so I think, I think, go ahead. I just think that the, the issues are the unknown, unfortunately, on what it's, your, your business plans, well, well, made its thought out. Um, I think Richard's saying, you know, making sure that it's adequate to be able to get the fire personnel in if possible. None of our business probably, but I think it's our due diligence to find out about the insurers if something like this that we allow would catch fire of somebody else's property, burn their hardwoods, possibly residents. I don't, but that's not a part of our board, but it's part of an, I, you know, a thought. Am I right about that, Matt? That's really not any of our, about their insurance requirements. Uh, it's mainly just the use, can they use this land for that? And can they make the property fit to where it can be safe for all?
Did you say that you were going to, you're working with the D N R on a controlled burn? And that in itself is going to reduce the chance of fires. If they do control burns in there with the D N R, and if that gets out of hand, it's the D N R's problem, because they're the ones that get out of hand with. That controlled burn is going to get rid of a lot of undergrowth and dead branches and that that are setting up for a bad fire. That's what the problem is out in California. They don't have controlled burns, and then when a fire starts up, it just goes in flames, there's all the fuel there.
And we've already had someone walk out there with us and walk the property, especially that valley. Um, they identified the, the trees that need to come down first, because we have to take down any dead trees before they do the burn, so it doesn't get up into the canopy. Already, um, told us, you know, the best time to do it, basically in October, so that's no problem.
They will be doing the control.
And they'll be there with us, yes. I, it'll be us, but they're there with us, yes.
Yeah, and we asked for that help, so I'm glad you asked that question. They designated this area and the, the surrounding hillside as a hazard already. So we're not looking at creating a hazard that's not already there. We're actually looking at trying to prevent that. We're trying to go in and manage the entire piece of property, this nineteen acres, the adjacent twenty-four acres that we're sharing. Even though it's only the five acres that's in this valley. We'd like to be able to showcase the Lust Hills and show how you can live on property like this sustainably. How you can go out and visit it, and how can you, you can incorporate it into something you do. If people are coming from an outside area, they can see that, hey, this is like a, a little Emerald Gem. It's nice to go here, just quietly walk. We're not inviting parties. We're not inviting literally.
And we're not seeking, you know, at this point, we're not seeking something to put up a big pavilion or to have big weddings or anything like that.
That's the opposite of what we're trying to do. Trying to get people that wanna get away from that stuff and then see what the natural side of the Lust Hills holds. And show them that, you know, the, the, the trees that are from the area are, are good in the area. What it looks like when it's not all uncontrolled, felled dead trees, um, walkable paths, the insects, wildlife, and.
The, the woman who came from the D N R, Liz, uh, Lindsay, she's actually gave us ideas to put on the fences that we plan to put on the property line. Like to put blackberries and things like that, where it's even thorns. So further prevent people from climbing over the fence, even if they, you know, cho- decided they were gonna try and do that.
Show them that, that there's natural stuff that grows and, you know, yeah, you have blackberries, and now you also have this natural barrier.
Do you have a plan to live on site?
Eventually, yes.
That's our plan.
Ten years, twenty years?
About ten years.
Ten years is what, I'm about just under ten years from retiring.
I don't know. So what happens, you know, we gotta think about our county as a whole. And no lawyer, of course, but if someone gets hurt there, they have to wait forty-five, fifty minutes for E M T. Can they sue the county then for not getting there? Your neighbor gets, you know, your neighbor gets in a fire. I know they don't have adequate insurance. Can they sue the county then? Because the county loo- because the county us let this happen. I mean, unfortunately, I don't know, after, you know, face litigation before in our county, I mean, it's like you always have to think about this too, you know? But at the same time, if one of the neighbor's property catches on fire and comes across and burns down this campground, then who's liable there? So you can't, it works both ways. Yeah.
So from that respect, is it no different than if we were asking to go out there and just live?
Well, I think the big hangup is that you're not there.
Yeah, they're not there full-time.
The big hangup is that you're not on site the whole time, and e- even though now, and I will say your, your business plan, you know, talks exactly about propane fire pits. So it wasn't something that was an afterthought. The pictures of it show them on rock in this, so that's great, but it doesn't talk about, it talks about you and your husband running it.
That's our plan, is to be out there every, anytime we have campers out there. Now, the first year, we, we don't anticipate it being full the first year, obviously. You know, there's gonna be plenty of days where there's nobody who's going to be out there, but on the days where there is, it will be he and I out there overnight. Or one of our adult children, they've also volunteered to go and do that as well. Um, we have children that are in their thirties.
We're, we're not farming this out as some giveaway resource. We don't want anybody to be out there when we're not there.
I think the assurance that we need is to know that somebody, that there's a caretaker there for the liability purposes of it.
Yeah.
Because we have the same liability concerns for any property that's out there. We wouldn't put a bunch of stuff that's out there that's worth hundreds or thousands of dollars and then go, okay, have at it. Because any of the ground grounds we've seen, there's always some site people.
Let us discuss it from on site. So what if these people have this property, they sell this property to someone else, you know? They're gonna have new, new owners there, and the condo has no say in that, correct?
Go after.
I don't think we can't say, well, you can be the only owner. You sell this L L C. And then you got new owners, and they don't step up and do all the things that you say you're gonna, they, yeah, you can say they're gonna do.
Well, they would have to apply for new, new things.
Condition, he's, he's correct, especially the condition use. So that potentially could.
So we talked about that before with other stuff, the, uh, the, the gun shops, the, uh, the kennels.
If it makes a difference, because it is, has been family property for over a hundred years, we don't have an intention of selling it.
But back to your point, if we were residing on the property and it gave us the conditional use permit, we could still sell our property if we were living on it and sell it to somebody else.
I'd like to hear from Chad and Heather and Cory, because I'm undecided right now. I'm sorry. I'm not sorry, I'm undecided.
Well, I think there's a, a couple of things. One is, is I think the, you've handled the noise. I, 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 I personally, myself, don't thi- see this as being a obtrusive use due to the fact of the topography of it. I don't think use, having, if, if the max amount of people is eighteen on five acres that are in the middle of the hills. I don't see that being a intrusive or out of, out of whack. Um, I don't think it's gonna bring a tremendous amount of traffic flow through there. I know it gets a lot of traffic. I know it's extremely dusty, driving all the time. I, I do understand that. I think the big issues are the, the, the safety people on the, on the lot and making sure somebody's there to watch over it. Uh, that's, I think their, their plan, and I, and I think the cost of making a road up to county specifications, or well enough made for the turnaround, is gonna be quite a noble deal. So it, there's, there's gonna be some conditions maybe that are set that make this not a feasible project also at the same time.
I think the big concern is somebody on site, and if it was approved, I think that would have to be part of the approval. That there would have to be, I mean, I don't know how, how it would be enforced if they found it wasn't. But I mean, do you, could you pull the permit, the special use permit?
Yeah, at that point in time, if a complaint came in, more than likely you'd use your sheriff's office, and we would bring it back to the Board of Adjustment to then, um, take away that condition use permit for it.
We have no intention of anybody being on the property without supervision.
Because we're gonna have an investment there as well, and we're tending on the property maintained in the manner which we prescribe, not some random visitor.
Can other people talk or not?
Um. We, I'm sorry.
You can close, you can close public hearing on it now. You opened public hearing now, you can close it on the board.
Yeah, we, we had that. I, I mean, I, I think I understand your concerns, Renee, still about the absentee owners and, uh, and, and, and.
We do have brom. You can't see it from the road, but we have rest day. Is that brom? I don't know. We haven't got. And, um, so I'm just gonna say that.
I, I don't, I don't see the condition of it, if the, if the fires are in those container rings with non-burnable things around them. I don't see that as whatever all of us probably thought at the beginning of burning logs and stuff.
Right, but think about it. We had concerns about dirt bikes and the hot tail bikes in the Lust Hills. These are.
Well, they're, they're in grass, so this is.
But a hot tail bike can lay down grass and cause a fire. This is a propane that when you shut it off, there's no sparks. And there shouldn't be, when the propane fires burn, there shouldn't be any sparks from propane fire.
I just know, I'm a camper, and I have girlfriends that are not, and they have done glamping before, and I get phone calls. Oh, my God, how do we do this type of stuff? You know, you, you can't. You can't combat all the stupidity out there of wanting to get out of the city to come to the country, because they wanna, you know, experience it. I do love all the sustainability that you're putting into it. I think that's great.
Well, that's why we wanna have somebody out there.
Yeah, for the, for the area, for the neighborhood. Because it could potentially bring some economy into the county.
And that's, another one of our attempts is collaborating with the businesses that are already, um, designed to pull in people and coordinate. That's why we've researched the, the covered wagons that you had talked about earlier. We were gonna list, um.
Glenwood businesses.
Glenwood businesses and.
Because we're not offering food, so if they want dinner, we're going, you're planning on, you know, telling them places to go and to.
Telling about local eateries, telling about the local winery.
You know, there is a question that I didn't see. Is this restricted only to foot traffic? No horses, no?
No horses, no four-wheelers.
No, there's been people from Pony Creek actually riding without permission on our property and it nearly destroyed one hillside, so. There'll be no animal use at all.
Did I read somewhere in here you were going to have like a snack shack or something?
We were gonna have, offer like, you know, like crackers and bags of chips and things.
If, if they get kids that they didn't bring snacks out for.
It's not like food.
But that would be in the, the small house that the supervisor's gonna have.
So it's not like it's something you're gonna have open from like eight to noon and two to.
Oh, you have kids and they don't have snacks tonight? Well, for this little thing for two and four dollars, we have this for your kids to snack on.
Yeah, yes, but there will be people.
But there are idiots.
Yeah, we're trying to, we've gone to several camping sites ourselves, we researched a lot. We're really trying to make this work as well as we can.
How do you, how do you plan to have these rented? Like, how are they?
It'll be done online.
Like through Airbnb, the RBO?
Just on our web.
We're gonna set up our website to accept both the traffic, um, entry forms built into the website. And, uh, uh, credit card payments and stuff through the website. So social media, there'll be a site on Facebook, there'll be directly to the website. And then if it gets fancy enough, we could expand to something like Insta or something like some of the other clamping campgrounds have.
And you will, you'll have that road that you were talking about putting in, put in before you ever start.
Yes, yes. Yeah, right now it's just a small driveway going up, but we need, we've already determined it's too steep.
It needs to be brought down and slightly angled and brought more in the direction of the flat of the valley so that we can bring it up and have a loop.
So it'll have a loop at that point.
We don't want anybody, it'll be easy for EMS because we're trying to accommodate for all these people that have never driven up something that's like in the Les Hills. We want them to be able to drive up, go straight to their campground, not stop, go out of their campground and not have to do a three-point turn and drive the rest of the way around and out.
So is there a lodging tax? Would it apply to this?
Yes, we. So it goes through the state. So they would have to charge, they'd be charging state tax and county tax. It goes directly to the state and then the state issues a check to the county. For that, for our amount.
So I'm thinking Ted, the only way I would support this is if, like you say, there has to be someone there on site. And a lot of these conditions have to be met. And if these conditions are not met. Once again, a complaint can be filed with our zoning department and their application can be withdrew, right?
Correct.
I think with, that'd be the only way I would support it.
What you're saying, Pat, is a caretaker on the ground, because twenty-four hour, twenty-four hour caretaker or. When, when somebody's there, because if they're there from, uh, somebody's there from ten to nine and the next person comes in at noon.
Oh, the hours. That's actually a good point.
Like Heather, you know, you can't control all these people.
The, um, the check-in is three PM, so three PM or later and checkout is by eleven AM. So that gives us time to police, that gives us time to change the linens, that gives us time to do trash, all of those things that we would need.
Will this area be gated?
Um, we don't have, we currently just have a rope across it. We don't have a gate right now.
It will, I mean, there, there will be something that closes the road off.
We can, yes, yes, we will have that. And actually, we are going to install cameras as well.
Well, we can't have a gate because then you can't get to the EMS unit.
Yeah, it's, yeah, just a, uh, it, not a locking gate. But it is, there is, right now it's just a chain across.
Yeah, we've got a cable and lock assembly set up.
But, um.
I have a question. I couldn't, I was trying to look up our matrix with the setbacks and everything. Cause this letter brings up a good point of setback of minimum fifty. What's, what's the setback? For Les Hills? I couldn't, I was trying to find the matrix on my phone. You know what I'm talking about?
That's probably a structure. It's seventy, it's seventy-five.
Seventy-five from the front.
From the front, which, I mean, their site plan does leave those.
Okay.
Yeah, before there's any.
How far from, from your property?
A hundred and fifty to two hundred yards from the road is where the nearest structure is gonna be. And that's even the nearest platform for a tent. Because if you saw it, it comes off the road and does this.
I mean, I do, I do think this, one good point of clarification for the property owners to make sure that they would understand is that if this were to be granted. It is a, as a commercial, there's a commercial use to these structures. So what that means is that those are engineered, even though it's a platform in a tent, there's engineering that goes behind that that gets done. Your road, um, that we're talking about for the driveway access, uh, that is engineered out to make sure that it meets the specifications for a fire access road. And it was the same for your sanitation facility. There's just a lot of engineering that goes behind a commercial project in there.
Yes, yes, we're, we're aware of that. We're absolutely willing to, you know, modify whatever you need to modify if that comes to it. If something is not wide enough or whatever, or not, not up to specifications, we will absolutely do that.
So it's a timeline to open.
Another note that I wrote, um, down here online was, um, regarding the flammable. So. No fireworks, no target shooting.
Um, no firearms.
Okay, what about like, um, alcohol?
No, we, we are not.
Smoking?
Not allowing smoking, no open flames at all, so no, no smoking.
So no alcohol, no smoking?
That's right.
What is the timetable?
Um, ideally it would be sometime next year when it would open. Um, you know, we're not looking at opening up this fall or anything, you know, we know this is gonna be a longer process, so. Ideally sometime next year, um, if it has to go into the following year, that would be okay too, but ideally next year.
Good, Richard.
Is, is there any water on site? I mean, are you gonna have a well or a hydrant or anything?
No, uh, we are just using the hydro panels for minimal water because it is going to, meant to be a totally sustainable site.
And possibly rainwater collection.
Rainwater collection possibly, yeah. We, we are looking into that, that we have not researched as much, so we have not brought that up very much. Cause that's something we're still looking into, so we're not as up to date on that as we are on the other parts.
So you're just gonna do the hydro panels for the tiny home also?
For the tiny home.
And it's going to be a compostable toilet.
Compostable toilets for sanitation. Independent compostable toilets, not collective compostable toilet. Because there are those below ground ones that have multiple, this is individual compostable toilets and, uh, rainwater collection.
And so are you?
There's any way they can dig a well out there, that property?
That would be entirely up to them. I mean, they got property there, they could dig a well anytime they wanted to.
Your neighbors got wells?
Yeah, sister, sister, brother-in-law have a well, there's a well.
Well, you could have a well.
We could.
Be a lot safer, yeah.
But when it comes to the fire in the Les Hills, the amount of water, in my experience in fighting the fires that have gone up and over the hills. Water hasn't been a component because you can't get the water to the fire.
Not nearly past enough. Okay, so.
Hi Cory, I have one more question. Um, and somebody brought up like porta potties. So are you going to have in, is, are all your tenants expected to use the toilets in their tents? You're not gonna have.
It's actually a separate, small. Not even a permanent structure, but separate like stalls, basically. It's not even in the tents.
Compostable toilets.
Oh, so it's outside, so it's, it's gonna be almost like a bathhouse just with toilets.
Yes, and sinks, yes. Sorry.
Two to three.
At least two, yeah, at least two. We may do more.
And the DNR regulates sanitation like that?
Yes, that's fine. As long as they're, you know, not, we're not making up a compostable, as long as we're getting them, that's.
Yeah, Rick said, you'll have to go and get the, the building permits to build these, whatever kind of structures.
Yes, for that one, for the, for the bathroom and the tiny home, we will probably have to have a building permit. But the, the tents, from what we saw, they said that those platforms did not need a building permit because they're considered temporary structures.
They will all, this is again, that's part of our caution, you know, the engineering aspect of this, you will have to get a billing permit for those.
And we can do, we're willing to do that if, if that's gonna be requirement, that's fine.
But it's engineer plans, and so that's the part that, every piece of this has been engineered, even when it comes to your composting toilet shower house piece of it. And that's gonna be something that, you know, I've, I'm a few years removed from chapter sixty-nine, uh, Iowa septic ordinance on there about how they handle composting toilets. But they're very well made, you plan that has to come up with, you know, where is that compost going? What's, what's happening with it? Cause they, the number of people using it, is it gonna become a nuisance? That's why, I mean, they're very well made, you know, being a well and sanitation facilities on site, depending on how it gets into chapter sixty-nine.
So three PM to eleven AM, Monday through Sunday, every day, seven days?
Yeah, every day, every day. Um, there may be days where we don't take anything to do bigger cleanups. But yeah, in general, every day is a possibility.
So what you're, what, well, I guess the board discussion right now is looking at is, number one. Having a permanent, full-time person on site at any time that there's a camper on site, okay?
It's fully our tent.
Okay, number two, that all engineering from the structures to the road all have to meet. Um, certain criteria placed forth with, uh, the county, state.
We have that, we will, we will have nothing to do anything from the driveway in that is there, it's private, so. County we have.
But it's gotta be, it has to be engineered to meet the code.
It's got, we've gotta have something so that.
But, uh, yeah, they have to have an engineer design the road and build specs if we're gonna.
Yeah, we know you're not doing it. We're, what I'm saying is making sure that it'll fit. The response vehicles that Mills County has, so it has to be designed as if, whatever turning radius, whatever slopes, whatever.
It doesn't have to be a condition, that's gonna be part of the requirement.
That's what I'm saying, that's what, that's what I'm saying. So that's number two in my, that, that we've been talking out.
I've got a question.
Okay.
You said, and I'm gonna clarify, these platforms would have to be drawn up by a draftsman meeting engineers. Before they can build them, is that what you're stating?
Can't be a drafts, it won't be a draftsman, it'll be an engineer.
All right, but I mean, they have to be, the plans have to be drafted plans for them to be built off of engineered plans for them.
It has to meet the decking.
International building codes.
Okay.
So that was my number two was all plans, engineering.
All the zoning officials, you know, the site will be limited to three to five camping units, limiting it to five units.
Oh, that's what they're asking for now, so that's all the more we can give, so.
To be a condition, five units.
Hours of operation, uh, we will go with their hours, the three to. Eleven, wasn't it?
Three to eleven.
And then, so that's twenty hours and quiet hours would be.
Ten to nine.
Ten to nine.
Maps, conditions, property should be fenced.
Yep, yep, yep. I think we went through the, the boundary, cert, the boundaries would be fenced. I would highly. I'm gonna, I understand that, I don't think this is enough to even stir up. I mean, the Amazon driver's gonna go by there more times a day than, than, I, I understand that that might be a condition, but to me, that's not prudent.
As per staff recommendation, park, parking will be established, it's an all-weather surface, meet accessibility requirements for your national fire code. I think that should be a condition. Property owners shall meet and give a tour of the site to the fire department before the site opens. I don't know if that's required or not.
Probably would have a plan, they'd want a plan of attacks. I don't know what your phone service is like there and, and anything else to make sure that. They know what they're getting into, that where the sites would be.
I think on these, what I've started to do on these that you'll see is I've started to add those in, uh, as a condition to a lot of these different uses. Because of the, the, how far taxed our volunteers are on uses like this. Just to make sure that if they, if and when they do have to show up to the site, that they're familiar with it. It may be something that they try to arrange with the fire department and the fire department might not express any interest in it. But at least we gave them the option, because a lot of times we'll send things like this out for comment to them. And, you know, they're busy with their personal lives and other things, we don't necessarily hear back from them, but the minute something happens and they wanna know why, that they didn't know. This is just an extra strain of communication to try to reach out.
I live next door, there's cell phone services iffy at best.
So we want to number these, you know, we wanna have numbers on them like we do with Mr. Nakamoto's, but.
Nine-one-one signs.
Well, that's what we were gonna say, we probably will put nine-on-ones, but we're, they need to be numbered so that they know if somebody's choking on a piece of steak, where to go. Don, go ahead real quick.
Um, you're listing those conditions and I just wanted to remind. You guys are the discussion of the firearms, alcohol, smoking and fireworks, would those be listed?
Yep.
The conditions as well.
Yep, yep, we're going, I guess we're going through the ones that, uh, we've been talking about. I mean, I think a lot of these appease the. The problems, I feel like we have a applicant that I think has a good reasoning, and I mean, it, really what they're saying is. Hey, for us to come out to this property and do something, we, in one essence, want to either teach somebody else or and or make money as we do it. Versus just go out here and mow and clean up dead sticks all day long. How much of an economy boom? I don't see that. I think if they go through all the. Conditions that we set forth with the full-time on-site employee, that's capable employee, that they do all of the engineering and plans, that they limit it to five. And if they go with the conditions the county has already set forth, they go with the no alcohol, no smoking, no fireworks. No ATVs, no bicycles. I really don't see this being intrusive at all.
All right, so let's list that stuff. Motion to approve.
Gotta make motion, not me, so you guys can listen, that's a long one. I think. I don't wanna put Audra on the spot, but.
Currently I have a list of ten conditions.
Okay, you, you listed them, okay, thank you. Um. Let's look, can we, can we hear those please?
You wanna hear them?
Yes.
Okay, so when you, back to the original staff recommendation, number one, I modified to say management will be on site the entire time. That a guest is on site. The sites will be limited to three to five camping units, maximum of eighteen people. Parking will be established, all-weather service to meet the accessibility requirements and international fire code. The property owners shall meet and give a tour of the site to the fire departments before the site opens and each year after providing information to the building and zoning department. Property owners will work with Mills County Environmental Health to establish sanitation facilities for the site. We have the established quiet hours for the site from ten PM to nine AM. Uh, sticking with number seven on the special events such as wedding, parties, other stargazing events, et cetera, would require an additional conditional use permit. So I guess, if you're interested in number eight or not, um, you'll just have to tell me right now. Number eight is the property owner will supply the dust control from one hundred and ninety-fifth street to the entrance of the property.
I don't believe it. And that's my personal opinion, I just don't think that this is gonna have any more activity on it than, than at Amazon, if it.
I mean, how much gravel are you on to get to the property already?
Half a mile, maybe, not quite a half mile?
Not, not quite.
All right, moving on.
All right, so moving on then, is the site will be fenced to ensure that the customers stay within the site.
I think that the fence should also, on that one, be totally up to the developer, the, what, what's your name, your LLC?
Firefly Outpost.
At the expense of Firefly Outpost.
So would you?
Yes, we're not trying to.
Well, Iowa has a couple weirder rules.
And number, and then the last one would be no alcohol, fireworks, smoking, UTVs, ATVs, um.
Motorized vehicles. Fireworks.
And.
Fire vehicles, yeah.
Motorized vehicles and shooting.
Nor horses.
More horses.
Please, no horses.
Four horses.
Which all of your business plan that we do have doesn't say anything, so it's, uh, nobody's.
It does not say that specifically, but that is not. Does not say that specifically, but that is not.
No, what I'm saying is you weren't intending on doing, it doesn't appear any of those things.
Mentioning horses, but what about things?
And we're not planning on allowing pets at all.
So, horses and or dogs, or pets, pets, I'm sorry.
Quadruplets.
Can you bring your parrot?
As long as he's not on fire.
We would allow.
No animals, right?
That's our preference, because we don't want everything to be pooped on.
In one of those conditions, can you also place that the units need to be separately marked for?
Um, yeah, so we'll add that, we'll add that on there.
Units numbered.
Units will be, will be marked.
I'd like to comment, you know, this, if this is approved or whatever. We're setting, we're setting, this board is setting a precedence of what could take happen, or what could happen in other parts of the Les Hills. I mean, I mean, the restraint you're putting on this has to be carried forward, or each one has to be done individually.
I would think that it would almost be on an individual basis, because each situation is gonna differ. If I was wanting to put one of these in the middle of the whole sandbar, it'd be a lot different restrictions as far as what they're doing in the timber.
So I understand, but I mean, uh, I, I just want, you know, the board, we, we've, we've had things come back and bite us on the backside. Not quite so, as what this is looking at here, so.
Do you think of another condition we might, we're missing?
Pardon?
Can you think of another condition we might be missing?
Oh, I, I mean, you've covered a lot of things here, I'm just saying, you know, and it's just like Ted says, each one would be individual. I mean, location, what they could, what they would supply compared to what this one is. Maybe the next one, it would have, you know, uh, availability of electricity and water, so you could, you know.
I, I think it's a case of each one would have to be addressed on an individual basis for where the locations are. This is, this is a very low-impact setup here, but if somebody's wanting to come in and uh, I've got the Les Hills here, I wanna set up a hill climbing, set up for motorcycles, that's gonna be a completely different approach to what they're wanting to do.
You, you will see unique conditions come across in different, um, conditional use permit applications that the board decides. But then you also have some, a lot of consistency that comes along with it too, uh, whether it's engagement with the permitting, the engineering, the fire department, E M S, those things a lot of times will remain the same. You're quiet, a lot of times when you end events, you know, those hours will transcend across just because it goes with the, the zoning ordinance, you know, where there's ten or eleven P M. Maybe a little bit later on the weekends, but normally during the week, you'll have those kind of same hours of the shutdown and startups and.
I, I believe the one we approved, they've got almost the same hours as they've ever come to here.
And I agree with what, what Matt says, when, when, a lot of these will, the bigger items, the making sure that the E M S can get in there engineering of the buildings, the difference is what the unique structure is, uh, people coming in and stating stuff. Don, go ahead. Or I'm not, I'm sorry, not Don, uh.
Um, I guess my biggest fear one of them besides the fire, um, would be, you know. We moved out to where we're at, we're right next door to Greg's property. Um, and basically, it's, there's no one else around. I got one neighbor that you can see and that's it. I fear that by adding a campground or lamping would lower the people that I could sell my house to. In other words, the people that move out to get into a nice quiet area, and they say, well, who's my neighbors? Well, you got this family over here, and then you got eighteen people that stay over here. Um, so they're gonna be like, ah, no thanks. So that's gonna affect me and the resellability of my house.
So he just is.
That's something to take in consideration.
Are we going to limit the number of days that somebody can stay in one of these units?
It's already limited in that zone.
Is it?
You know, the other thing with your question there, on the other side of the coin, if this is required, and they're doing everything legally right, we better have a darn good reason to tell them they can't do it, because they ruin our self-advocation. But if they're following our code and our code allows it. Have a good reason to say no.
I spent a lot of years driving a black and white down the city, and I can tell you that people don't always follow the rules. And that's the reason we have police and deputy sheriffs and that. If we didn't, if human beings followed the rules, we wouldn't need them. And, you know, all it takes is somebody wanting to start their own little campfire or whatnot, catch that hill on fire, and my place is toast. So. That's it, my piece. Those are the two things I worry about the most. Not my event land evaluation, I'm gonna have a limited number. Instead of a hundred people wanting to buy my house, let's say, I have sixty people. Um, that are interested until they find out there's campground next door. The other one obviously is the fire. The neighbor to my other side had a fire one time, they brought trucks in and basically it jumped the hill over to Kenny's property.
I was there for that.
So.
That would be my statement to that, is nobody was there to stop Linda from starting.
Can't stop it anyway.
On a windy day, it was a high wind, nope, it was.
Well, the guy didn't have, I told him not to.
Yeah.
All right, well, guys, we're, let's, let's, let's not get in the weeds, but Bob, thank you, I, I, I do understand your concern with that. It's, it, that's a, that's a tough one for anybody to put a monetary dollar amount on ifs and wins, because at the same time maybe this thing's the next Google, and they wanna buy your property for ten times the amount of it too.
Yeah, well, if you find that guy, send him over, would you?
I know. So, that, that's a tough one, I, I really feel that uh, the conditions that are put on this are about as tight a conditions than I can remember of anything that we've ever done. I know.
Take the lead on that, Ted, because you seem to be more in favor than me.
Now, if you want more time, if you want more time, this is something also that can get, it can, it doesn't have to be decided tonight either. Do you feel like it needs more research or something?
No, I'm good with these conditions, I think. I mean, everything considered, like I said, I mean people have the right to do what they want with their property, you know, Ted, you say that before, I say that before too, but we have to think about the neighbors, and that's what we're trying to do, to make everybody happy. So are we done with the conditions?
I believe the conditions are what Matt, I don't think there's any additional ones.
On your deal, it says Mills County Environmental Health, that meant Mills County Public Health, right?
They now fall within the planning and building department, so we oversee environmental health.
So they just changed office names because they're under?
Right, supervision-wise, they changed.
They're still public health.
The state is doing a realignment of public health.
Oh, they're still the public health. Environmental health form, really.
They do not, the state does not want environmental health associated.
What do you have to help regulate now because of that?
Uh, we just oversee them, and it, it actually works out better, because now if somebody comes to get a house permit, you're subjecting a well permit is all there. So we see it all at one time rather than issuing a house permit, never knowing whether or not, you know, or going ahead and find out.
That should be a good thing.
Yeah, it does really streamline the process a lot, and it's, uh, it's going well so far.
I think the, one other, and, and this is priority, someone, and something, all of these conditions have to be met before they can start the project, so the designs of the, the roads, the designs of the structures. Before somebody can then, of course, during construction. You'll have your fence and those things done, so.
I'll make a motion.
Should we put something in about burn bans, following the burnt, like?
Well, if there's a Mills County burn ban, it would, it would. Well, I don't know if it would, but if it would on a, on a controlled burn like that on camp, but I think, I think we might be kicking that one just a little bit too far now, because I I, I understand what everybody thinks about what the stuff, but I believe what their pictures and what their intent is, is to have almost like a little ring with retaining all blocks around it, gravel all the way around it, and it's got a propane tank going into it.
Exactly.
No embers flying up in the air.
Same thing I got on the table.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically a grill on the ground with rocks.
That'd be ten conditions, right? I'll make a motion to approve with all the stipulations of all eleven conditions be met.
There's a motion by Ted.
Hold on a second.
And a second by Pat. Can I get a roll call, please?
Pat Collins.
Yes.
And Volta.
Yes.
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 Grading plan. Is that part of one of the conditions? Is that part of the engineering?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I knew, I didn't hear, normally that's one of the, we're talking roads and all that, but.
The engineering for the roads.
Okay, okay, so the grading plan, okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I will let you know, though. Yes, sir.